Okay, welcome to the June 5th Board of Selectment Sewer Commissioners Meeting. First item is roll call. All members are present. I'd like to congratulate our new member, Michael Kittredge. Congratulations and all the members, all the people that ran for the selectmen's race. And Raj is back again with us.
To bother you.
Yeah, so it's our lucky day. First item on the agenda is public comment. Hearing none. Next item is board reorganization. Sewer Commissioners first, I guess, vote. First will be the chairman. Do I hear a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to appoint Mr. Crowley as the chairman.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is vice chairman.
Make a motion to appoint Raj as vice chairman.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And clerk?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Hadley as the clerk.
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Hadley?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. It's all yours, Jack.
All right. I'd like to thank Mr. Ruchow for doing an excellent job over the past year. And we'll just move them right along. Item number two, consider designating other selectmen's assignments for 2019, 2020. Listed in our agenda is the appointments for last year. We had the townwide planning committee. Last year was Ms. Bonson. I have a motion on that.
I'd like to have Mr. Kittredge do one, please.
Second.
All in favor? Well, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Upper Blackstone Water Pollution Abatement District. Last year was me. It was a grueling assignment. I don't mind doing it again.
Hasn't run any better since you have nominated Mr. Crowley.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
MBTA. Last year it was Ms. Bonson.
I nominate Mr. Kittredge.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
They never meet.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Parks Facilities Committee. Last year was myself and Raj. I'd like to do that one again.
Me too.
Make a motion to keep the same?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
MWRA. Another grueling alternate. Another grueling assignment.
I nominate Mr. Crowley.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do you ever go to the meeting? Is there any meeting at all? No?
Why do you? I think Raj wants it.
You want to, Raj?
So I nominate Mr. Crowley.
Second. My mic's second. I'm sorry.
Barring any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees. Last year was Mr. Hadley.
I nominate Mr. Hadley.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
CMRPC alternate.
I will continue.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bylaws committee is the sitting chair of our committee.
I nominate Pat Crowley.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Economic Development Committee. Last year was Mr. Ruchow.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Municipal Building Committee. Last year was Raj.
If anyone wanted.
Does it mean?
Nope.
I nominate Raj.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Transportation Committee Ex officio.
I'd like to continue.
Second.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Peg Board was Chris. Continue on that?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Citizen Survey Liaison. Are we, do we?
So the only thing that's left of Raj, maybe if Raj and I can finish, is just taking the information, looking at it, and then deciding what we're going to do and how we're going to present it. So that's pretty much all that's left on that.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Town Beautification Liaisons was me and John.
I'd like to change that. Chris and I were working on the island over there, if that's all right with you. We only met with the Board of Health.
Yeah, and they basically told us no.
Exactly.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
So, okay, so both of them.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Cemetery Negotiations. It was last, who was it? Mr. Hadley and Raj.
Is it up this week?
So we made this appointment last year thinking it was up, bud?
This was just a continuation. You've got to, you have to.
So I move Mr. Hadley and Raj.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
DPW Contract Negotiations. I think it should be the senior members of the board, you and Chris and John.
I nominate Mr. Hadley.
Second. I'll make a motion.
I'll second them both.
And for the discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes. May 15th, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May 15th, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May 20th, regular session.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review and vote to approve the warrants for the period covering May 16 through June 5, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve warrants for the period of covering May 16, 2019, to June 5, 2019. Towns payable warrants FY 2019-48, FY 2019-49, sewer FY 2019 SE 24 and 25, payroll PR 2019 23 and 24, MLP 31 and 32, school FY 2019 S 18.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And just, I think we've done this before. To clarify, you, I think it's still you and?
Me and Raj.
Raj, review all of this. If there's any issues, you bring it front of the board. If not, we vote on it. That's the way that the law says it.
What used to happen was three out of five of us would just have to sign sometime during the week, and there was never a vote. So this is something that, under the Municipal Modernization Act, they said that the Board of Selectmen have to actually vote on the warrants. Makes it easier for us because three of us don't have to come in over the weekend, but it makes the meetings a little longer. Okay, next up is Bonnyasik with the signing of the serial loan notes for the final borrowings on the fire truck.
If you could show the view of the results. Yes, there are eight. There's nine. If you sign. I'll be explaining.
Just everywhere where there's a blue, you can sign it.
Okay, for almost my last official duties of the town, I would like to just go over, this is for the fire truck. We had authorization to vote. We borrowed 575,000. Then we went ahead and just recently borrowed 85,000 on this town meeting approval, and we're paying down 130. So what the selectmen are signing now, you guys are signing the award going to Newbury Port Bank, and it is called a State House Serial Loan Notes, and it's five years consecutive. We don't have to do this every single year, which is a big plus for you guys. So you pay down for five years till it's paid off. So the 575, and then the 85, once it gets paid down, we're actually paying down 130. So we're borrowing 530,000. Because we borrowed 575, at the one, the prior town meeting, 85,000 for the equipment, it came to the 660. 530 is our new note. So that shows that we paid, we lowered it by $130, which saved us interest money. So for five years, as you see the schedule in front of you, it shows you what your interest costs are. And again, we received a 2.4% State House note. That's excellent. Right.
Great.
$37,100 is the total note of interest, and the debt service is 567. So the interest that it costs us over the five years is the $37,100, which is reasonable.
Questions? Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you've done. Are you retiring?
Hey, if you give me girls, I can get past you about the financial questions. I'm good to go.
Move on. By the way, she's going to stand there and wait for it.
Yeah.
You gotta be kidding me. This one died too.
You need a blue pen?
Yeah, blue one? You know what? That is a nice pen.
Yeah.
Keep that with me.
You can have it.
My.
Here, my conference.
Who's this?
Here, my conference. Don't ask.
Is she waiting for it? She is.
Yes.
Who cares if I have Tom come up here?
Yeah, you want him.
Chief, is he here?
No.
Tom? No?
What are you calling?
Next item on the agenda is consider approving a disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract for Whitney Barnard, library trustee. Give a little scale on that, Nancy?
Sure. Mr. Barnett is a member of the library trustees, and he has applied for the position of custodian at the library. Because the library director, the board, because the Board of Library Trustees hires the library director, but delegates the director the responsibility for hiring of staff, all he needs to do is to file a financial disclosure. That disclosure needs to be approved by the law. Big word is in the agenda file, and the city should file what we need to sign.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now I'll go back in the right order, because I just decided to skip a few things.
Doug Horka and Lucas Rinker, Eagle Scout Project.
This is a follow-on to our previous meeting. We have met with Jack McCormick, who seems to be the guardian of the monuments in this town. And he's proposed that we, if you look at this picture, that's the gazebo or the bandstand. He's offered us a place by the tree near that bandstand, or the monument that is generally depicted as this. Not quite so much base.
It will not have a plaque on it. The plaque, the block it's on will be granite, mostly.
So where is it?
This is a monument to all fallen soldiers.
Right next to the gazebo. On the right-hand side as we're looking at it? Somewhere like, somewhere in here?
But.
Oh, okay. By the road. Perfect.
Far enough back so that it would not be affected by snow plowing. So this is just a follow-on to the questions you were asking last time.
You still think you're going to be able to raise that money in that sort of thing?
I actually got contacted yesterday by the owner of the plaza that has chalise in it. He made a, he wants to make a large contribution. He wants to donate $1,000, and he plans on getting some of his other business friends involved. And he said he wanted to help lead a campaign to get me to raise the money. So, alligator, way to go.
Now, do you need some signatures by the board here to confirm?
I do. I only need two signatures. One goes with this set of paperwork. It basically just says that you understand what the project is, i.e. building memorial, who will benefit, and, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. How tall the, how tall the statue and the whole thing?
Monument.
Monument.
Because.
How tall?
My dad did an Eagle project that by now was completely pointless. And I figured that with all the Eagle projects are going around, I just keep seeing people slacking and taking easy roads. And I just want something that will last.
How tall is this?
How tall it is. Oh. We haven't actually gotten the parameters, but I, I mean, usually they're like this tall.
Six feet?
Yeah, around six feet.
You said it was going to be a granite base instead of this base?
Yeah, it'll be granite base.
Lot of plaque.
I think it's, I don't know, there's something with granite that the sculptor likes better. So, it's a lot wider except there.
Very good.
No, I'm looking at this picture that you gave us, and it looks like it's some type of brick base or something. Are you planning on doing that also? Or are you going to reach out to the DPW director? I think you should reach out to the DPW director.
Yeah, no, the sculptor's going to take care of all that.
Just like a standing area, a standing area around it that was going to be set up? That's beautiful. That's nice.
Have you reached out to the DPW director?
Captain said.
Okay. I think when you start moving forward, Nancy, think they should talk to, because maybe they can prepare the base for the?
We'll just have a conversation about where it lines up and maybe show this.
I'll take on that. That's, at this point, we're trying to get the mission to go forward. And he needs your signature in order to have the Eagle Scouts give him their blessing.
I can also talk to the sculptor and see if he plans on making a base for it.
Yeah, you might want to get some type of base.
Let me talk briefly.
Those people that are there won't be just walking on the grass. It'd be nice, maybe.
Yeah.
You can talk to them. I'll make a motion that we move forward this project and have the, I believe we need one signature. The chair signed the paperwork. I mean, if done, that's.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So which ones do you want to sign?
I need them to sign.
Tell the chairman.
Designing where it says beneficiary, because the project benefits the. Again, an X.
There.
What's the state? Six, the fifth?
Fifth.
And then the little box is.
Is that council was on you?
That council was in the district. That's the little two papers I gave you before. Nah, it's not pointless. It's, the Eagle projects are usually done on a much smaller scale. Usually you don't need state approval.
Okay, anything else? No, that's the deal. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Just if I could ask that, you keep the town administrator up to date on what's going on so she can report back to us?
Will do.
Of course.
Thanks very much.
Next item on the agenda is Stephen Lisukis, Vice President of Governmental Affairs for Waste Zero, Presentation on Curbside Textiles Recycling.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Steve Lisukis with Waste Zero. As you may know, Waste Zero, we're a waste reduction company. We spend a lot of time looking to find ways to help cities and towns increase recycling, increase food waste diversion, and reduce the amount of money they have to throw, they have to spend to throw away trash and burn it. In most of our cases in Massachusetts, burn it in a waste energy facility. A lot of cities and towns are spending a lot of time banning plastic bags, as an example. And though that's a project we support, that represents 0.3% of all solid waste in Massachusetts. So all the energy that goes into banning it, it's 0.3% of the solid waste. But because we spend a ton of time in the trash data, bless you, as spending, in part of our mission of helping reduce trash and increase recycling, what we've noticed is 8.1% of the trash in Massachusetts is reusable recyclable textiles. The vast majority, 95% of it, can be reused and recycled, but only 15% is today. With all the drop boxes you can find everywhere, only 15% of that material is collected. So we spent a couple of years looking to find ways to help cities and towns get that material out. The drop boxes work for some people, 15%, but not the vast majority of people. And so our work, in our work, we've came across a company that what they do is exclusively collect and recycle textiles curbside for cities and towns. That company's name is Simple Recycling. They're out of Ohio. And what they do is they send, if a community wants to partner with them, and a million residents in Massachusetts have this program today, they'll send these pink bags to all the residents. I'll actually hand them to you. So you have a, so you can see. So these bags are sent to all residents. If a program, if West Borlston, for example, wanted to implement this program, they would send at their expense these bags and that mailing literature to all residents in town who have town, curbside town service. And they would then go about following your recycling route. So if you have a Monday collection, you can put your pink bag out next to your recycling, and your textiles will be recycled. If you put two bags out, the Simple Recycling driver sees those two bags and then gives you two bags in replacement. If you're cleaning out somebody's home and you need 30 bags, you call the toll-free number on the bags, on the literature. You fill out a web form, you send in an email to Simple Recycling, and the next morning, they'll drop those 30 bags off for you so you can recycle whatever material it was that you were looking to recycle. So it's a very high level of service. Simple Recycling charges zero to the town for collection, and there's no cost to the residents for the bags or collection. It's straight up zero cost. And Simple Recycling will pay you $20 a ton for the material that you're currently paying roughly $60 a ton to incinerate at the waste energy facility that you use. So the idea behind the program is to give residents a choice. If people are using a drop box and they want to continue to do that, please do so. If you want the option to do it curbside, you have that option. The idea is to go after that 85% of the material that's just not motivated enough to find itself to the recycling box. Make it a curbside service like we did with recycling a long, long time ago. Give people that convenient option in a bright pink bag that you don't have to say, honey, where's the bag with the clothes? And you have to go find it. And then when you can't find it, you just throw it in the trash. You have the bag of clothing, if you could find it, in your trunk, and you drive around for two months with it in your trunk, and you never drop it off. And then eventually you throw it away. It gives those folks an option to make sure that material is recycled and then can go to people who need it in thrift stores or wherever the material ends up. So that's a brief discussion, Mr. Chairman, and happy to answer any questions if you like.
So you said the cost of giving these to the residents, how is that done?
So Simple Recycling pays for that as well.
They pay to mail them to them?
Yes, sir. So the cost to the town is zero now and always. It's in the contract.
I have a couple of questions.
Hold on a second, Raj. Chris?
So, besides clothing, are there other things that you take?
Yes, sir. So if you think about, so the first people who take a look at this material, there are four channels this material goes into. The first and best is the thrift stores. So if you think of, can I find it on thrift store shelf? They'll take that material. So pots and pans, one of the top five contaminants in recycling, they'll take. Textiles, one of the top five contaminants in recycling, they'll take. Dishware, they'll take. Tools, there's a variety of material. Now, that material's 3%, 2% of everything they collect. So being that they can't advertise everything, they'll tell people textiles, because that's really what people put out. But the website and the literature will have information as to the other materials they collect.
So this CAD will have all that other information on it?
That's, as will the website.
Oh, because right now this one just says shoes, clothing.
Is that Rochester?
Yes.
Yeah, so every community gets the ability to provide some, do some customization there? So that's what Rochester wants.
We'll list, we'll list everything that it takes.
If that's what you'd like to do, you get to edit it.
I don't get, I don't really see the reason why you wouldn't.
Sure.
If they'll take everything on it. Now, is there one bag in here or?
Two.
There's two to stack.
Sure.
Raj?
Yes. So when, when we leave, some clothes are to the Salvation Army, so they do get the tax benefit. Do you provide any of those receipts?
So, a good question. So for, so most of the textiles, places where you leave textiles now are for-profit corporations. Salvation Army is not. Goodwill is not. Big Brother, Big Sister is not. So for those, there, you can get a tax deduction with the tax law changes that happened two years ago or so now. Most people lost the ability to deduct that. But for those who still have the ability to deduct it, though, they can. Simple Recycling is one of the for-profit recyclers, so it is not a donation. It's a recycling, just like your paper and your cardboard and all that stuff. So people would not have the ability to deduct it from their taxes. If they wish to do so, they can, if they wish to get that deduction, they'd be encouraged to continue to use the Salvation Army or others, and then they can get the tax deduction that way.
The next question is, you know, you said, when I leave a bag here, where do you leave the bag? On the curbside?
No. So the bag is secured to something. So it will be tied to your mail post. If you're using a recycling barrel that has a handle, it'll be tied to that. If you have neither, or they can't find the mail post for whatever reason, they'll run to your front door and tie it to the railing of your front steps or slide it under the mat. In the worst-case scenario, they'll find a rock and put it under the rock, right near your trash or recycling. They don't leave it loose, and they don't put it in the recycling, if you're using a little set-out container, they don't put it in that, because you may not see it.
Yeah. The reason I ask is, you know, it'll be flying everywhere. It'll be a nuisance.
Yes. You'd be able to find them because they're pink, but it would be quite a nuisance, yes.
Thank you.
What did you say the town gets back for a ton?
$20 a ton. By the penny, excuse me, by the pound. So you get, so every pound you would get credit for.
Wow, okay. Do you have any communities in this area that are doing it now?
Yes, there are 39 communities in Massachusetts doing it now. Just about a million people, just over a million people, as I mentioned. The communities right nearby geographically, Grafton, Shrewsbury is starting next month, in July. And Worcester has been public about its interest in implementing the program as part of a package of reform to their solid waste and recycling. Those are the closest geographically. Size-wise, Wenham, Upton, Merrimack, Rochester, which you have, Dyton, Hamilton, and several others are similar size-wise.
Is Grafton completed a full cycle, a full year yet, or?
Yes, they have.
Oh, they have? Great.
Yes. Yeah, we've done about, overall, about 2.2 million pounds of additional recycling. So most, many communities are going from like a 15% recycling rate for this category of material to roughly a 45% recycling rate.
Wow.
So there's still a ton of material out there that is not finding a home. But hopefully with time, that'll change.
What do you have for contamination rates? I know ours ranges like 20. I know ours ranges like 3% to 9% depending on the day. What about in these bags? What are you seeing for contamination?
It depends on the community. It's low single digits on average. So what we find is contamination rates are low, we think, we don't know, but we think it's because it's your genes, it's your bedspread, they're your stuffed animals, it's your dishes, and to throw an apple in there or a bag of trash in there is not something you do because you know this material is going to somebody else who you hope will use it. When we look at Enatic, Ashland, Hamilton, Wenham, other communities that have pay-as-throw programs, their contamination rate you'd think would be higher because I can avoid putting it in the green bag, but it's actually lower because people really know how to recycle and really care in pay-as-throw communities. So we find the recycling rate on average, 3% to 4% at the highest, but for pay-as-throw communities to be much lower.
I guess I'd ask, maybe you can tell us, has there been any negatives that you've got from towns? I mean, I can't see why every town wouldn't do this. So, I mean, has there been issues that we don't know about, or?
So the biggest issue we've experienced is the set-out rate for this material is 2% to 3%. So out of 100 household stretch, 2% to 3% will put a bag out on any week. As a result, the collection vehicle, it's not like curbside trash that's stopping at 90% of the households. It's stopping at 3%. So it's mostly drive and a little bit of stop. So the vehicle moves at the speed limit, but pretty quickly through town because it's not spending 2/3 of its time stopping. So the biggest issue we've seen is the residents who say, "I know my recycling truck comes at 3:00, so I'm going home at lunch and I'll put my recycling out, and your recycling truck may indeed come at 3:00, but this van came at 10:00 because it only took them an hour and a half."
To do the whole route.
To do the whole route. So in that, the good part is, in that instance, the resident will call customer service for Simple Recycling, and the customer service will give them a choice. Now, we have the GPS maps to see, did we indeed go by that house? And so we can tell if it was a true miss or not. If it was an actual miss, that's a training opportunity for the employee. Usually it's not, usually it's that 3:00 noon kind of thing. And so we give the resident the choice. Do you want to leave it out and we'll pick it up first thing in the morning when we come to West Boylston again?
Yeah.
Do you want to bring it in and put it out next week because there's a thunderstorm and you don't want your sweaters to risk getting wet? We give the resident the choice, and we'll either pick it up, if the van's in town, clearly we'll pick it up then, but most likely it's not, so we'll go back first thing the next morning. And that's what we've seen is the major issue, is that transition for folks thinking, you know, if you're in an afternoon recycling, well, you're supposed to have it out early anyway.
We would tell them to get it out first thing in the morning, like we tell them to put rubbish and recycling by 7:00 AM.
Exactly. But people being people.
Sometimes wait. So you brought up a good point in regards to the snow, middle of the winter.
Yes.
Pouring rainstorm.
Yes.
Some of the stuff might get ruined, but people can still put it out.
So it's a, that's correct. So it's a drawstring bag, so the hole's usually dime-sized.
Right, so you can keep it pretty good, right.
So it's really limited. We actually, we spent a lot of time designing a bag that had an internal flap that you could lift outside, sort of like camping gear.
Yeah.
It was a little too fancy, and people didn't always pull the flap out.
Right.
So they found this draw, regular drawstring bag works really, really well.
I think it's a, I think it's a no-brainer.
One more, one more question. So if they missed that route, so they won't pick it up the next day?
They will.
Yeah, they will.
They will.
They will?
Yes.
So the resident has to call their company, then only they will come and pick it up.
So, you know, that Simple Recycling has to know there was a miss.
Miss.
Of one variety of another, whether it was an actual miss or that 3:00.
Even if it is a one house, they will come and pick it up?
That's exactly right.
The next day.
That's correct. Unless it's a Friday.
Yeah, the next day, they'll do the next route. They'll do the Tuesday route, and they'll just run by the Monday route and pick up the bag they forgot.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Like on a Friday, they won't pick it up.
On Friday, they'll pick it up on Monday.
Right.
Or the next Friday, unless it's a Saturday. So they follow your recycling routes.
So holidays, when they go to Saturday, they bump to.
Okay, that's correct.
The other question is, you know, the holiday schedule. Is it same like our trash schedule?
They follow your schedule exactly. If you have a road closed for construction, they follow that too. It's, the idea here is to make it an extension of the blue bin to one of the top five contaminants in single-stream recycling now is textiles. We want to try to get that out, but maintain the convenience of curbside recycling. So they follow your schedule. If you have Monday collection, but Monday gets bumped to Tuesday because of a holiday, they'll bump. And like two years ago, we had a Tuesday bump day that was also a snow day, so Monday got bumped to Wednesday. They follow your schedule exactly.
If you can figure out when we have snow days, then you're better than us. Yes, we have a high time figuring out. So I don't know if we need a motion, I think.
Anybody else?
One thing I want to show you, you all have your little packet. How nice, because the van is marked, so no one's going to miss this. This is marked, it's a container. Quite acknowledged, two members of SWAT are here tonight with the mayor work on this. They.
I may get confused with Amazon.
Getting ahold of Steve, and we sat down, and we had a great meeting, and I'm forming a trail with this program that we come up to my town.
Yeah, and I would think we would want, I mean, I don't know if the board, you're going to handle it. I would think we would want the list of everything they take, right?
Yeah.
That's what you, yeah, you would agree, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty much anything that'll fit in the bag.
That's, that's, like, I think, small appliances, things like that.
That's correct.
And they were asking about other communities that are using it. I spoke to representatives from Grafton and from Framingham, and they had only wonderful things to say about it. And again, the only issue ever reported is you missed the pickup. We hear that now with the trash, so we understand how that works. And they were very satisfied with how that was handled by customer service.
So do you have Simply Recycling stores? Or do you guys take this stuff and sell it to someone else?
So Simple Recycling will process the material and then find out, so I mentioned there were four channels for the material. The first and thankfully very small is trash. The second, also very small, is directly reusable material that the Goodwills of the world or savers or thrift stores look at and say, "We want that on our shelves," so they'll buy that. Then the other two categories are material that needs to be repaired or, and then resold, or material that is only, has only has fiber value, so they make rags out of it, or soundproofing, or thermal insulation for homes. So they figure out what, where it belongs in those value chains, and that's their job. They've been doing it for 54 years. It's how they started life, is figuring out that can be reused, but that has to go in somebody's attic as insulation.
That's amazing.
So the, your website has the item, prohibited items?
I don't know if it has prohibited items. It has accepted items, certainly.
So they can throw in anything?
No. There'll be a list of items that the residents are requested to consider putting in the bags.
So what's accepted, can go in?
Correct.
And then we have to assume that everything else is prohibited?
Correct.
You're not going to list everything, right?
Well, it may say, "Everything else is prohibited." I'd have to check the website, but if, I mean, it's an infinite list of things that exist, right?
I know.
Or not infinite, but, so it may say, "No hazardous materials, no paint." I'd have to check.
Cannot paint, yep, that's what, that exactly I'm asking.
Yes.
Cannot paint. Yeah. So do we need a motion to move forward?
Yeah, I was going to say, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, to move forward with this project?
Second.
One, one discussion on it, obviously, I think everybody would agree, the SWAT should be the lead on this to make this happen, and then, you know, come back to us.
Yeah, I mean, once, once the final, I guess, once the final, do we want to see it maybe before?
Yeah, but that's.
Yes, we will refer back to final flyer so that we can see it, and if we can have a contract ready for our next meeting.
Sure.
That would be great.
And then I think, as far as we're concerned, the town and the SWAT, is just educating the people. I mean, all the item will help us with that and.
Certainly will.
But they're going to get this in the mail, so.
Yes, we will also report back on, above the town, yes, they estimated we might get about $1,200 a year back from the town.
But I'm guessing without, without education, some people may get this in the mail and look at it, and it ends up in recycling if they don't know what it is. Because, look, I mean, it's nice, but people, if they're not told, and they may not read it, they may just think.
We also have cable, so it can be nice to be, program on cable.
We could throw it everywhere.
People know about the new program.
Yeah.
And $1,200 a year is another $3,600 that we're not paying for trash. So it's, it's not, you know, and I don't, this isn't really about money as much it is about reusing stuff that doesn't dawn up on land.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay. Motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business. Consider request from AJ's Pizza, 67 West Boylston Street, to transfer their common BIC license to The Dew Inc., DBA AJ's Pizzeria.
We are selling the restaurant, so to.
Could you just identify yourself?
All right, sure, sorry. My name is Sam Viasis, I'm one of the co-owners of AJ's Pizzeria. We've been in town for about 17 years. We're in the process of selling the business. We decided to, we want my parents to retire, we want to move to greener pastures, basically. So we're selling the pizza shop to Nicole and John Metropolis. So they're going to take over the store, everything's going to stay the same, there's just going to be different happy faces behind the counter.
Nicole, you want to tell us a little about yourself and your background?
Yes, we just left a business of 27 years in Hudson. We had a honeydew donuts. So now we came closer to home, back to the pizza business. That's where my husband started. And we hope to stay here a long time.
Why West Boylston?
Thank you.
I'm asking, why West Boylston?
Oh, why West Boylston? I'll be honest with you, we wanted to come to West Boylston and open up a honeydew, I think it was like 12 years ago. It was that little building that was next to the.
The hamburger and hot dog.
The hamburger and hot dog place.
It's the creation place now.
And we went through conservation with all like the wetlands and stuff, but we just, we couldn't do a drive-through or something, and so we backed out of that. But we've always wanted to come to West Boylston, so.
That's great. Congratulations.
And all town officials, no issues with any of the licenses?
No issues, everybody reported that they're all compliant.
So moved to transfer the license?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
So when will you?
July 1st.
July 1st.
Well, we're doing.
We're closing on Monday if we get the transfer license.
We're going to be here until July 1st, but, so we close for vacation usually for July 1st for a couple of weeks, and then we don't come back. So basically, that's our last day there.
So they're going to work with us till the end of June.
Good luck to you and your parents, and good luck to you. Welcome to town.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Now Tom's here. Chief? Fire Chief Tom Welsh discussed surplus fire equipment. I decided to skip forward in the agenda and you weren't here.
So we put you on a few committees.
While we're on the theme of recycling.
Can it fit in this bag?
I'm here before the board to find out, one, how we're going to get rid of the used rescue truck and fire engine. I haven't done one in the past. When we went and purchased the new truck, we were told by the salespeople that we could do better on our own than what they'd offer us in a trade-in. Basically, anything older than the year 2000, it's just going to be used for surplus or a backup truck for someone. There's some value, but not much. So we have a couple of options. We can either put it out to auction, run an ad for $300, sit and wait, let the time go by, have the auction, see what we get. Or the second option would be go to the municipal bids website. You post it on this website, people can place their bid, we can make a minimum bid, and then they, they just do a bidding on it. It is all state-approved, it's all sanctioned by the state. At the end of it, they pay the purchase price, and out of that purchase price, the site is paid for that. They get their fee from the seller, I mean, from the buyer. So they pay that fee on top of their price. So it's, I think, a win-win for us. I did a little survey of our regional chiefs, that, what do they do? And the comments were from Petersham, he said, "They didn't get rich, but they got rid of them." Gardner, they had done one without the Muni bids, they had a 1989 truck, similar to the R-Engine 3, and they got $2,500 for it. Barry used the Muni bids and had all good comments to say about it. Sterling, fire department does not use the Muni bids, but their DPW swears buys it. Our light department has used it in the past, and they, John raved about it. So that's where I'm leaning to go. I'm just looking for guidance on what do we set for a minimum bid? This is going to go into the, it's not coming back to me, it's going to go into the capital fund, so.
So we put, if it sells for $2,000, we get the $2,000, the person pays the 10% or whatever it may be.
To that.
To the company. Now, this is something we could use in the future too. If we ever looked into doing this, we always do so on our surplus list.
We do. In our surplus, we really don't have that much on surplus.
Right.
But this was a company that was at the Mass Municipal, Municipal Convention last year as well, and it's widely used by municipalities. Makes it much easier process. And then to pay for an ad is right, you know, the cost of advertising to TNG, put it in there, it's a longer process, and this is really.
We'll still try to tell our residents somehow, we can, you know, put it on the website, that it's happening.
Sure.
But, yeah, it just seems, seems like a no-brainer.
Can you look at the website and see what similar trucks are going for?
Absolutely. There wasn't a lot of fire apparatus on there, and it's, it's, there's like five states that are on the site. New York, New Jersey, you know, like up in our district, but there wasn't a lot from Mass.
As far as the, the price goes.
Well, I called, I called my salesman that we bought our new truck from, the one that said we couldn't get much, and I said, "What is, what would you set this as a fair market value?" And he said, "Either truck would go for between $3,000 and $8,000." That's what his estimate was by, he had done a walk-around of trucks when, when he came, you know, when we were purchasing the new vehicle. He had done these walk-arounds, so he knew what the equipment was. There's a value to them for, for the right person. Again, they're not going to be a frontline piece, that ship sailed. It would be a reserve piece, if anything. And then I've had three inquiries about our rescue truck from the Bolton Chief, who's here tonight.[1670.83] The Clinton Fire Department asked me what we were gonna do with it. And then, I was called from Princeton, Rhode Island. And I have no idea how Princeton, Rhode Island, found out we had this truck, but I don't really care. But I took all their information. I told them I was gonna meet with the board, and I would get back to them. So, I'm just, you know, my feeling is, we set the minimum, and then, we put it on, and we see where we go from here.
What year are the chief?
The KME, which is our Engine Three, which is a pumper, it's twenty-eight years old. And the nineteen ninety-four Mack MR six-hundred truck is twenty-five years old.
So, I would make a suggestion to put a minimum bid of forty-five hundred dollars on each one.
How much?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five?
And do you... So, do you know if it doesn't sell, do we get... Does it go for a month? Does it go for two months? If it doesn't sell, do we repost it at a lower price?
I think you could probably go in and readjust your minimum bid, but...
I'm guessing it goes for thirty days or something?
Things were on there, and I think it has a time like how long it's been there. And I mean, the quote from... When I contacted the chief from Holden, he said, "He sat on his for two years with some auction company. Nothing happened with it, and then, they ended up selling them on their own for about the forty-five hundred dollars a piece." Again, some of them, the metal's probably worth more than the vehicle, but they... They each have issues, but they're not major issues. We just didn't wanna sink any more money into it. And again, we could work with whatever, you know...
They must give, I'm guessing, thirty days, and then, they have to give some end. There has to be an end.
Doesn't cost them anything to have it on there.
Well, I know.
It's a picture on a website.
No, but I'm saying, there's gonna be an end, so it finally sells. So, I'm guessing it's thirty days.
Well, I think, yeah, we'll go in and readjust our bid. I mean...
Thirty days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Can I ask a question? Chief?
Yes.
If Jeff is interested, the other chief, so do we still have to put it on the website to sell it? Or can you make some kind of...
It has to go surplus.
I think we'd have to do one means or the other. It has to be...
You have to.
I have to post it somewhere to legally...
You know, they are our neighboring towns, so...
Massachusetts laws say you have to post surplus equipment.
Yeah, but if you put it on that website, so anyone can go in and ask for it, whereas, we may not be able to sell it to our neighboring towns. So, if they are interested, can you put that as a surplus differently? The one which is not interested, maybe we can put it like that. Do you know what I'm saying?
All right, well...
Senator Sanders, I think the whole thing is we're gonna have to advertise and pay money. The other way, one way, we have to pay the money for advertising. This way is free.
'Cause I... My thought was... My feeling was, was maybe we could have a minimum bid for a municipality, and then, we could have a minimum bid for someone else. But I don't know if you can do that in these rules.
John, you were gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to put both vehicles for forty-five hundred dollars a piece, minimum bid.
Second.
And I would say, I appreciate the other towns looking for it, but we need to try to get... We just bought a fire engine for how much money? So, if we can get another ten thousand dollars, it helps this town, so... So, I think we put it on.
And you're out of my parking lot before they get turned into a bucket of rust. That's the important thing.
So, a motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, chief.
And one more item. Jeff, did you wanna come up?
No, he's mad at us. He doesn't wanna talk to us now.
The Chief Legenda, who's a lieutenant on our fire department here in West Boylston, had, on another note, had gotten back to me that they have two pieces of apparatus, I believe, that have mechanical issues. And they're wondering if they... Is there any way that they could borrow one of our vehicles? Okay? Out there, in this world of ours, there have been ways that people have lent people vehicles, but it's more of a, like an insurance and a legal thing. It was like we're renting it to you for a dollar for so many months. It's when people have crashed their ambulances and they didn't have an ambulance, people that had three ambulances loaned their other ambulance to these towns to get them through this process, so...
What's he looking to borrow?
Either... So, the position of Bolton right now is, we had my rescue truck, it's a pumper rescue, much like it was purchased here, but from two thousand and three, dropped the fuel tank last night. And then, my tanker also has... Is out of service, swung down to two engines. So, knowing that some of these departments in the area have let other departments borrow their extra, their spare, I contacted the chief and said, "Is there any possibility, before these go on municipal bid, or wherever we can borrow the rescue R Engine Three for two weeks to get me through, so at least I have a truck to get up onto four ninety-five with the extrication equipment, so..."
That should just be a simple MOU, right? And remember, I'm not standing, and then...
It's registered to us. It's insured by us.
Yeah, I could follow that. I would have to check my insurance company and see what happens if we lend you our vehicle and it's an accident.
Oh, absolutely. I know this is gonna be an agreement. That was... The chief and I literally just talked this afternoon. So, this is another avenue I was looking at, so this is kinda...
As long as our town is protected, I personally don't have an issue with it for two weeks to help a neighboring town.
I don't either, and I think you can get insurance liability for the, you know, for a period of a month or something like that from your insurance carrier to ours, seeing as you'd be responsible for any damages or accidents or anything like that. I would be fine with it.
I have no problem helping out a town, but I think we need to... Legal has to look at this. I just, it looks like it's a...
First of all, I'll start with my, because if it's been done by another town, they insure most of the towns in Massachusetts. So, I'll see how it was handled, and if it's an MOU, I can have something drafted by town council.
But then, the other issue is, we're gonna pay cost to town council to do the work, you know, 'cause nothing's cheap, so...
If it's not feasible, it was just another avenue that I was...
I don't know if it is. I've never... Chief, have you ever talked to any chiefs that have done this?
I've just heard that they've done it. I don't know how they went about doing it. But I know people have been in pinches before.
If it's feasible, I don't have any issue doing it, but if we have to go through our town council and it's three or four hundred dollars worth of legal fees, I would expect Bolton to reimburse us for any... You know, obviously, not the wear and tear costs on the vehicle, but any out-of-pocket costs. As long as we get reimbursed, I don't have an issue with it.
I agree.
Chief?
Yes.
Is this an... Do we need this vehicle, or we have an additional vehicle, spare vehicles?
It's the one we're selling, surplus.
This is the one that's sitting outside right now.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow, we're having training on the brand-new truck, and then, it'll be put in service Friday, so...
How soon can we get this on the muni list?
I think tomorrow.
Maybe that's the end, put it on the list, and it's a bit of good.
But then, it could be thirty days. If the auction goes for thirty days...
Well, I'll put it this way. That may be the option to do. We are actually very interested to extend the life of that apparatus. So, by doing that, one quarter of our calls, for some reason, is MBAs in Bolton. We're doing a high level of motor vehicle accidents. That vehicle is on the road quite a bit. So, to extend at least another two years to bring a vehicle in, so we are actually very interested in the rescue truck for that purpose, that we cut down on the current engine, too. It'll allow us some flexibility to move our equipment, so...
Is there any minimum time it has to be on there? So, if we put out a forty-five hundred dollar thing, and they bid tomorrow, that's forty-five hundred dollars. What's the procedure involved with that?
I'm not sure if we set a time limit, or if there's one for the site.
That's what I'm wondering.
And I think it goes on there, and as people bid...
That's what I'm saying. Is there a minimum? It's gonna be on for a week, or is it gonna take longer? I mean, is there something that we set?
You fill out a form at the bottom, and I didn't go in to fill out the form. It was, you know, your name and all this information about the truck. You posted a picture of it. And then, I think you got into it as you went to the next screen, but I didn't bother going to that next screen because I wasn't ready to go to pursue that avenue, and I think we set that time limit.
If it's like any other auction, if you... Once you achieve the minimum bid, you can sell. Okay. I don't know if it is now, but almost every auction I go to is like that.
Well, yeah, I know on CAS, but I mean, on like eBay and all the other auctions, they're on for thirty days.
Well, there's a minimum and a buy it now.
Yeah, all those features. I mean...
So, Bolton needs it to buy it now, or we figure eighty thousand?
But I'll, you know, I'll get it on there, and, you know, and again, I'll work with Chief Legenda and see where we can go, okay?
Do we have a motion on...
I make a motion to, if it's possible to let them use it, I would do that. Make that motion.
And I'll work with Nancy and Meyer and...
And you're talking about how many days?
What'd you say, two weeks?
I believe everything should be... They unfortunately had to custom-make a fuel cell, so it's gonna be about two to three weeks.
Fifteen days. Two to what?
Two weeks. Two weeks will get us. At least I'll get another truck.
Fifteen days.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Concurrent on the hiring of Donna Gallagher to the position of clerk in the Office of the Treasurer/Collectors effective June twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, for a maximum of five hours a week. Step two, grade two, fifteen dollars and four cents per hour.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Our longtime clerk in the Treasurer/Collectors office is retiring, and we advertised for the position, received exceptional candidates, and we have selected Donna Gallagher. She is gonna be fantastic in this office. She's a very hard worker. She's very much attention to detail, and we look forward to her joining our town hall staff.
What's her background?
She actually has done some computer work in the cemetery office, working data entry. Customs service is exceptional.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Remember, I jumped out of it.
Oh, you jumped out. Thought I fell asleep.
No, I just mishap the agenda. Consider voting to recognize the acceptance of the following donations for the Bandstand Committee and to approve expenditure of these funds for general purposes. All donations are in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five dollars. They are from the Committee to Elect James J. O'Day, Reservoir Garage, Oriole Health, Menards Auto, CMSC Auto School, Softstep Floor, Manor Restaurant, O'Connor's Restaurant, Clinton Savings, Fay Brothers Funeral, and SNS Daily.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'd like to thank the businesses. It seems like we see the same names over and over again.
We do.
On these donations, so thank you to all these.
Review of senior center use form. Chris?
I asked Nancy, we can... I guess we can look at it, and then, maybe talk about it in another meeting, but after I went through it, I don't... I'm not sure if we're involved. I know the director usually sets it up, so we weren't involved, but it's in the agenda, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 'cause there's things that I think residents should get a reduced price for than out-of-town residents. So, if it's to raise the price for out-of-town residents, and I think there should be... I know it says "commercial use," "community," "non-commercial use," "town government," but it... Community from Springfield could use it, and they pay the same thing as if someone from West Boston uses it. So, and I don't... Again, we can maybe look it over and then talk about it in another meeting, or... Like Atzen Craft Room, "commercial use, sixty dollars an hour." For civic, community, or non-commercial, fifty dollars an hour. So, if the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts wanna use the craft room for three hours, it'll cost them a hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know. It just seemed...
Have you ever paid that in the past, that kind of money?
I haven't. No, I don't get it.
Do you know that?
We don't charge.
Yeah.
We used to have a lot of groups that met at Nixter. The only people who... We have Squads and Club Day. We had an exercise class in May, but we've never... We did the Pyjama Derby up there. We've never charged town leaders. But we could invite the senior center of the Council on Aging in for a discussion.
I don't know if it's the Council on Aging or the director. I don't know if the council... Did they set this? Were they the one that set this?
They had input into it.
So, I mean, has this been approved?
It was approved. We had an issue in the beginning. They said, "We bring this one together." They wanted us to check with the town council to make sure that we didn't rely on the fact that we don't afford any own building. Still paying on the building. We went to town council for review. They made modifications, and in fact, we sent it to town council at three hundred and fifty.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, at a minimum, it should be civic, community, non-commercial, residents, town residents, and non-town residents. But then again, I don't know about the hourly fee. I know it's... I know there may be something small from residents to cover. Who comes and opens it up? If it's the maintenance person that's gonna open the building?
When we were at Nixter, we used to have Boy Scouts, and the Boy Scouts were fantastic. And they would obviously leave the building the way that they found it. We did have, once, when they were in, that no one swept through the building at the end, and the bathrooms were not picked up. And at that point, you'd have to pay two hours of custodian fees, but I called them, and they came right up, and they fixed everything. So, I waived the fees. But we only charged if they did not leave the building the way that it was found.
Yeah, again, I mean, the only experience I have is at school, and we've... I've been involved in groups that rent the school, and they do have... They do have fees to rent the school, which I understand, but I don't know if it's residents and non-residents. I think residents, for any of these situations, should pay less than a non-resident, because their tax money is also paying for this building.
That's one of the things, you know, we said, senior center slash community, community can use it, right? So, if you are charging it for the community, that's our own groups, like a Boy Scout, Girl Scout, someone is using for the sports. They do beat here, right, the sports?
They do here. We have soccer.
Little League. I think that should be... They should not be charged for them.
I mean, again, we can research this a bit. I just think, for some things, there has to be some cost. If someone wants to use the multipurpose room in the kitchen to have a... Before-the-wedding dinner or something, I think there should be a charge to it.
That's an individual, individual person, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean, but...
Definitely is charge. I'm talking about Boy Scout, Girl Scout, your soccer, your Little League. They do have groups' meetings here.
No, and I guess I'd go one step further. If Little League Boy Scouts wanted to use the kitchen and the multipurpose room for an event, like a banquet or something, I think there should be. They're gonna expect to pay it somewhere else, but I mean...
I think there should be free for that as well.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know about like classroom for thirty dollars an hour. Does that, if you wanna have a meeting or something?
Well, yeah, if you look, there's two schedules. You have the Monday through Thursday, eight to eight, Friday, eight to four. So, if you have a weeknight meeting, town and governmental uses, it's free. Now, Little League would fall under civic. Little League, you know, since that's the one you mentioned, they would end up having to pay.
Right. The fifty dollars an hour to use the Atzen Craft Room or the classroom.
And if they're... I think if the, you know, if it's the Little League Board wants to have a meeting, and it's, you know, eight or ten people that are coming to the meeting to discuss Little League business, there's not a chance they're gonna go to the senior center, that they have to pay thirty dollars an hour to use the Arts and Craft Room.
I think that should be free.
Friday through Sunday, like you said, even if the town wanted to use it for an event, Friday through Sunday? They're expecting us to pay the senior center forty dollars an hour to use our building?
That's what the schedule says.
No, we can't.
There's also forty dollars an hour before, set up for forty dollars an hour to clean up after.
Is there a deposit also?
Yeah, if it's over...
Over fifty people, it's three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars of security deposit. I think, you know, this is way too much.
This is something we definitely bring up and talk about.
Just curious. I happen to be on the Council of Aging. You wanna come up and... Dave Femia? I'm on the Council of Aging. We have a meeting coming up Monday, and I didn't see anything on the agenda about this on our meeting, so I don't understand. I know that in the past, we've talked about, you know, if there was gonna be a fee for anything. So, I'm just curious on where this came from. Does this come from the director?
No, this is in place. So, I guess we've just learned that this committee didn't have any input on this. Because this is already in place.
I don't remember discussing any of this. I know that there was talk about it, but we never...
This is from previous. This is from years ago. There's not...
No, no, this is the current. This is the newer one.
This is current, multipurpose. I mean, this names all the rooms we have in the building.
Yeah, this is new. This is... The director already...
Maybe I had a meeting last month, and nothing like this was a... One hundred and fifty.
This is the town council and the county council, and this is... Mr. Richard asked me to create a facility use question about a reservation and request for a facility use rental.
Well, maybe that's gonna be discussed Monday at our meeting, but like I said, I didn't...
So, the Council on Aging has not voted on and approved this form?
No.
So, at this point, then, I mean, you've heard our discussion.
Right.
I think we should table this. Let them come up with a form, and now, the Council on Aging is gonna... Are they the approving authority for this form, or is this something that would have to be set by the Board of Selectmen for the fees? I mean, I don't think the Council on Aging owns the building.
I was just gonna say, the town owns the building, so how will we... They cannot be...
Well, I could say, when I asked Nancy about this, she said, "Well, the facility use form for this building never came to anybody." It was done, you know, without us knowing. I know there's no fees attached to it, but there is a facility use form.
Well, actually, if you know, if you need things set up, or you need to store the services, but to keep it in the store, you can sit at night, and you have meetings, and people are very good about leaving the building as they have it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, again, you asked a good question. I, the director maybe doesn't even have to ask. I don't know what goes in front of the Council on Aging.
And where do you?
The day-to-day running of the building, does that go to the Council on Aging?
I believe this was one of the goals that Lisa was given by the previous town administrator.
So the fees would go to, wouldn't go to the Senior Center, it would have the.
No.
No. Fees would go to the general.
General fund, right, so.
So who set up the schedule? Wait here, the one we're looking at? Lisa?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
Yeah, again, in my view, this is an outrageous fee. If we go to the town, and we say, we are charging for the Little League soccer, it's a $50, $30, $75, that's outrageous.
Couldn't agree more.
No, we should not be charging any fees.
But I agree with you, but if somebody from Springfield wants to have an event at our event, that's what I mean, so we need to break it up to residents and non-residents.
Yes, that's out of town.
The Council on Aging hasn't even looked at this yet. Why don't we table this, have them look at it first? And I think, I mean, we are the owners of the building as the executive committee of the town. Any fee schedule that, before it gets published, needs to come to us for our approval.
Yep.
So, has anybody collected any money on this?
No, I don't think anybody's rented.
No, I don't.
No, not, not.
No, and that's when I, when it opened, I said, I want to look at this.
I mean, this is the first I'm seeing of this.
That's a great point, because we've never even seen this and agreed to it, and it's already in place.
Again, I go with what Nancy said, this one never came in front of us. Does the police department have a community, a facility use form? I don't think, I don't know if there's fees on theirs, because we don't, but I agree. Let's, let's, if, if the process we think needs, if, I don't know what the Council on Aging, how they, what say you have on the running of the building.
I don't, I don't either, but like I said, you know, we had talked about this, you know, from the time that.
But it never came to you.
But we have, you know, maybe it's on the agenda, maybe it's something that's going to be discussed on Monday, but we're just saying, if this is already in place, it's not something that I know anything about, you know, and being as a member of the Council of Aging, we're supposed to, you know, the director's supposed to be telling us what's going on and stuff, and like I said, maybe Monday, that's going to be.
It seems to me that I would venture a guess that other towns, you know, Sterling is not charging Sterling Little League to use their new Senior Center for a meeting. That would be my guess, so.
There has to be, like, again, it's going to be a fine line. If you're using the whole facility, the kitchen and everything, there is cost to the town that you have to charge a fee for, but just to use a room, $50 an hour on the weekend?
Do we have the original drafts of this that were done? Do you have those before you send them to the council?
I do have the original.
Okay, can we, I'd like to just see how they came up with this.
The original what? The old one?
Original drafts that they originally did before they sent it to the, it's already been sent to council.
It was sent to council.
Yeah.
Just recently.
No.
No.
Before the building opened. Yeah, I agree with Pat, and let's, if, if the, if the director, you know, I don't know what the.
Maybe we should have Lisa come in and discuss these, the, I think, I think we're all in agreement that.
Something needs to be worked.
This schedule needs to be changed.
Right.
You know, I didn't parse this and say, this is what it should be, this is what it should be. I think the best thing to do is, let's see what other towns are doing, get some feedback from other towns, just like we did when we, when we looked at the building committee fee, the building fees. We had a spreadsheet that said, now, it's not going to be apples to apples, but we had a spreadsheet that says, use the multipurpose room, this is what is charged. Now, not everyone's going to have the same rooms, but let's get, let's do our due diligence and see what other people are charging, how they set up their fees, because to, like Raj said, to charge West Boylston base soccer and baseball and softball is ridiculous.
For just, for just a meeting room.
Right, right.
But again, I guess we can go one step further. For instance, the PAX Commission sets all of their fees through their, well, through their board, is, is that how the Council on Aging works? I don't know the answer to this. I don't know what that charge is and what that.
You guys had to set these before, because they didn't have.
Right, so I guess we need to.
Nobody wanted to rent out Nixter?
But it didn't come through that, it came through we, at Nixter.
Yeah, but Hatwell, I guess you could say, yeah.
The thing is, and one thing I could add on is, while we are on road shows, we said that we are not naming it as a community center, but this is Senior Center slash Community Center. So any of the community events happens there, are they senior using the bigger room or we room? Are they, are we charging? No. The same way, when the Senior Center is not in use, any of the West Boylston community groups, they should be able to use it, but, you know, as Chris said, you know, they can use, if they are using our gas, so they may have to charge it.
It has to be, it has to be some, and then, and then if, and then if the group charges every kid $10 to cover the food, you charge him $11 to cover.
The cleanup.
Yeah, right, the cleanup and the cost of using, like, you know, the gas, the wear and tear on all the equipment, you know, so I think on the big stuff, but I think just a room, yeah, we need to, you know, we need to look at that.
No, if you say that, and if you are charging $50, then people will go ballistic on us.
Put together a schedule similar to what we did when we looked at the building fees, and then we can revisit this next agenda?
You know, make sure that, you know, we bring it up, someday ahead on the, you know, find out what's going on. Like I said, I know we talked about this in the past, but nothing was ever, you know, voted on or officially discussed, you know? We were waiting for the Senate, the new Senate to be, you know, finished and moved in, you know, and going through different things about seeing, you know, what kind of activities we want, we were going to get, you know, try to get, and this was informing the board what, you know, we proposed, so this is all something, you know, new as far as, if this is something new that was put into place, I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
And if we could also ask maybe the director, does the director set the agenda for the Council on Aging?
No, we, Chairman, we have a group discussion.
If we can ask them to maybe add this to their Monday agenda, it would have to be, it would have to be something that would be done, they can add it to the agenda. What time's your meeting on Monday?
3:30 at Senior.
That's 2:40, 3:30, huh?
Well, no, changing the agenda can happen, as long as they post it.
It'll be $48.
A meeting has to be posted.
Changing the agenda, okay. Okay, thank you.
Next thing, I had asked that the dog feces problem on the rail trail be discussed. We've, as a board, have been saying for years, we don't want to give the rail trail up to the DCR, because they won't allow dog walking. I still don't want to give the rail trail up to the DCR, because they don't allow dog walking, but if, if the people that have dogs continue to use the rail trail and not clean up after their dogs, we're going to have to, as a board, look at saying, you're not allowed to bring your dogs on the rail trail. There's a whole slew of problems associated with that, you know, the enforcement problems, you know, who, who is the person that's going to enforce it? I'm sure the DCR would be more than happy to enforce that for us if we did, did a letter of agreement with them, that they would enforce that, but this, people want to walk their dog there, but then they don't want to clean up after their dog, and, you know, just wondering what the board thinks as potential solutions, you know, absent outright banning dogs, do we put signs up that say, listen, if you keep not cleaning up after your dog, dogs are going to be, are going to not be allowed on the rail trail, and if it continues to happen, and we can get a piece of land for the cemetery, and we're going to say, you're not going to walk dogs. I would, you know, go so far as to say, if the dog owners are not going to clean up after themselves, and we're going to have to ban dogs on the rail trail, I might want to look into swapping it for a cemetery, or a piece of land for the cemetery if it gets to that.
The only thing I'd say to that is, they're not West Boston residents, possibly, which is probably a lot of the case, they, they may not care if we don't own the rail trail. So, I mean, we already have, there's already a law in place in this town for dogs, people not picking up after their dog, it's just hard to enforce.
Yeah, they're not picking up, but some people, they leave their bags.
They put it in a bag and leave it, like at the gate.
Which is worse.
Is there any?
They actually put the bags in the porta potties.
Is there any signage now?
Yes.
Yes, signage.
Both dogs.
Yes, it says carry in, carry out, in their, on the new kiosk, there's a.
Where they get the bags, where they pull the bags, right?
We took.
There's also a container for bags, that watch you sit Greenways, keep stopped, with bags for people to use.
Yet people still don't clean up after their dog.
So, you know, I kind of agree with Pat, for something, say, if this continues, it actually the town must choice to do something.
I, I agree with both of you on that, but if we're telling someone from Worcester that comes every day, that if you don't pick up after your dog, the town's not going to do this, I mean, why should the West Boylston residents that may all pick up be punished?
No, well, I think you're saying, if it continues to happen, we're not going to be allowed dogs on the trail anymore. That's the only way you're going to stop them, somebody that walks their dog.
I, I think that the West Boylston residents that don't have dogs that want to enjoy the rail trail are being punished, because there's dog feces all over the place. And if it's, if, if I have to choose between punishing the West Boylston dog owners, because the dog owner from Worcester is not cleaning up after his dog, or subjecting the West Boylston residents that are dog owners and non-dog owners to feces on the rail trail, I'm going to say, sorry, you can't bring your dog.
Yeah, but you are punishing the West Boylston because of the Worcester guys, or some other town guys.
I'm more concerned about residents and non-residents that enjoy the rail trail, and there's, there's dog feces all over the place.
I totally agree, but at the same time, West Boylston residents, they do like to take their dogs, walk their dog in the rail trail.
And they may clean up.
You know, sure they clean up.
They, yeah, as.
And, and.
How are you going to?
There are more, I believe there's going to be more West Boylston residents that walk on the rail trail without dogs, that would much prefer not to have to deal with dog feces. So if we say, nobody can bring dogs, the Worcester, the Worcester guy that's bringing his dog wants to use the rail trail, if he's coming from out of town with his dog, they, they're purposely wanting to walk their dog there, they want to use the rail trail, if we say, you, you know, and I don't think we need to go, at this point, to, we're banning dogs. I think we need to let the public know, you're on notice, that if this continues, dogs are not going to be allowed on the rail trail.
Yeah, and this, this issue isn't just on the rail trail, we're getting the same issue on our parks. People are bringing their dogs, and then kids are playing baseball or soccer, and they're not cleaning up after themselves, so it's, it's an enforcement issue. I don't, I mean, we can't obviously have our dog officer full-time walking around watching people, I mean, the side streets in town, it happens all the time, too, so. But one thing I can tell you is, this is why the rail trail doesn't allow dogs, because of this issue, I'm guessing.
Can you charge out of town residents?
No, how do you, how do you collect it?
I mean, it's an issue that we need to, we have to let the public know, it is an issue, like you just said, and we have to, if it doesn't get any better, we have to enforce it.
I mean, and, and, people aren't going to want to hear it, but we could do the same thing at the, if it's an issue, and I haven't seen much of an issue at the parks.
They are already, it already says on the sign, no dogs allowed, by the rules, but you see people stopping and walking their dogs on it all the time. So, I mean, so a sign's not going to make a difference, because it already says, no dogs allowed. And if we ask the rail trail group to give us input on this, they're going to say, this is why we ban dogs on the rest of the rail trail, I'm guessing, I don't know, because we don't put barrels down there, correct? We don't put barrels.
And the reason for that is, is because.
Everybody's throwing everything in there, and they're overflowing.
That causes.
Yeah, I know why, but I'm saying, we don't put barrels, they got to bring it.
Carry in, carry out.
I'm sure that they would be happy to help us up there.
What was that, Nancy?
The item is here tonight, so.
She'll be glad you came.
So, I mean, do we want to add signage? Do we want to do something at this point? Do we want to just ask the item to say we were discussing potentially?
What's the solution?
Not, you know, not allowing dogs on the rail trail, see if it helps, I, I mean.
I don't think signage would hurt, though. I don't think if we're giving them a warning, and saying, everybody watch out for everybody else, you know, if you see something, say something to them, because other people want to walk their dogs still. You know what I mean? I don't think that would ever hurt.
There's going to be cost of building all these signs, having them all installed, there's going to be cost to us, to the town. I mean, these aren't going to be able to be paper signs, they're going to have to be metal signs with rules of the rail trail. Well, does the town of West Boylston have rules of the rail trail?
No.
I mean, it.
I don't see it posted.
This is the only part of the rail trail in the whole state that the town owns, one, a town owns, correct? That we know of?
I don't think it's the whole state.
Well, wherever the rail trail goes, it's owned by, it's owned and maintained and handled by the rail.
No, I believe there, and this is from memory, I believe there are a couple of other sections that are still owned by the town. The vast majority of it is owned by the DCR, and they maintain it.
I guess we can find that answer and ask them what they've done.
It's easy to put up, you can't bring dogs in the Holden, you know, it's supposed to bring dogs in the Holden, and so we could put a sign on the gate on the West Boylston end, and that way, everybody who goes in can see it, so maybe that's a big difference, we have a sign made, and we can put it on that.
Right. Nothing elaborate, I think, just to warn them that, you know, we'd love to have them still have dogs, but it's their responsibility, we don't want to take it away.
But now we put that sign up, and it doesn't change, now that you yelled at the kid, do that one more time, and we're not going to go, go on that trip, and you still go on that trip.
Can you take his phone away for three days?
I, you take the dog away?
Yeah, it's the same issue with the PAX, I think the PAX Commission is having the same issue, so.
Do we want to?
Maybe the dog officer does go down there and write some tickets, that's the way the word will get out.
Yep, that, that will work.
Go down there a couple of days, write a couple hundred dollars' worth of tickets, that will.
That's better than any sign.
I, I don't know, it's, the law is already in place, all we're doing is fixing the law that's already in place.
But I think we should invest in a sign on the West Boylston entrance, some kind of sign. It's not a cost, I mean, I can't see a cost of more than $50, $75.
Right.
I could find a cost for that.
Right. I think that'd be one.
And what exactly do we want to say on this sign? Do we want to say, no do, I mean, we don't, I want to do something more than no dogs allowed.
Right.
Because dogs are allowed, if you.
No, I think it's talking about, I think saying what the sign already says, she says there's signs already there, that you must take everything out of the.
But the sign that's there is, is more general, pack it in, pack it out, that, that applies not just to dogs, that's your soda cans, your.
There is, there's that sign, but when you go in on the kiosk, there's a sign that says, somebody put up, of picking up after your dog and removing the waste. Kiosk that these towns have.
I don't mind the sign, I, I mean, I don't understand, but maybe we can reach out to other towns that own the rail trail and see if they allow dogs. I don't, maybe the, they'll, the answer will be easy on that, I think if we ask the Greens, Greenway Committee, they'll know that answer pretty quick, I think, right? They must know what towns own.
Sure, we can do that.
And see if any other towns.
Do that, see what, see what they're doing, and then we can revisit this and.
We may get the answer that we all disallow dogs.
So why don't we do that, and bring it back to the next meeting, and see what the answer is on that, and then make a decision.
And we can think of what we might want on that sign, because it depends on how big it's going to be, depending on what we write.
Eight by eight.
I was just, I was going to say four by eight.
Well, look at the rules for the parks, it's huge.
General update on the Senior Center.
Okay, um, I just want to tell everybody, reiterate, there's a lot of rumors going around that we're not, they're going to, uh, RAC is getting paid to, in not fixing the field and stuff like that, the fields, no one, the money's withheld, no one is getting paid until it is done to, the town is happy with the way it's done, the rocks and firm for the, uh, mixed the field, uh, will be removed by RAC at no cost to the town, the seating will be fixed, and it will be, until we're happy with it, they will not get paid, I just want anybody to understand that, we're not going to pay anybody, we're not going to spend a dime until it's done and we're happy with it.
Yeah, I mean, well, I, we're getting through the growing season now already, this was supposed to be, this is the growing season, and then next year we can use the field.
Right.
I mean, we're going to, right now, during the election, I went there, it's, it's just sand, it's not even.
We're going to have to.
They have to water it.
We're going to have to go, because they're, they're responsible for maintaining it until it's, until it's usable.
The rules say something about three cuttings.
Yeah.
And it was this high now, so I don't know what cutting, I know it's new grass, but.
It just, uh, it's not, we're, we're aware it's not acceptable, and we will not accept it.
It says three cuttings for new grass, but it also said that the field would be returned to the condition that it was in.
I agree, I, I have pictures of it that I can bring and show you, it's awful.
There's a, there's a lot of issues besides field, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of small.
With the landscape.
With the landscaping and stuff like that, you know, and the, uh, RAC knows it, and they, uh, they've hired someone to replace the original bidder on it, to repair, make repairs, so.
So, the next building meeting.
The next building meeting is next Wednesday, if anybody wants to come, it's an open meeting.
We'll talk them, that's on, that's basically one of the main things.
That's, that's on the agenda, and, uh, we will get an answer and keep pursuing it, but like I said, no funds will be expended until the town is happy.
Okay, appointments and resignations, concurrents on the appointment of the following officers as special officers for work details during the period June first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020, it says 2010 on the agenda, but it should say 2020, at forty-nine dollars per hour, all officers will have until August first, 2019, to be sworn in and complete their paperwork with the town accountant's office, or they will forfeit their ability to work details for this fiscal year, and Nancy, I'll let you read them.
You could actually move this as printed in the agenda, because the agenda was posted on the website.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was lovely. Uh, acknowledge official notice of retirement of Sergeant Francis Glenn. You want to read that, Nancy? You want me to read it, you have it? I have it, I can do it. I would like, this is, uh, from Sergeant Francis Glenn, I would like to take this time to officially announce my retirement from the West Boylston Police Department, my official last day of employment will be August twelfth, 2019, after completing thirty-point-seven-five years working for the West Boylston Police Department, I now, I now find it is time to seek out other opportunities and spend more time with my family, I want to take this opportunity to thank the town of West Boylston for their trust and support in allowing me to serve as a West Boylston police officer, I also want to thank my fellow officers for their support and dedication to the overall mission of the West Boylston Police Department, I sincerely wish the best for everyone, and I thank you all for the guidance and support that you have given me over the years, respectfully, Francis Glenn, Sergeant, West Boylston Police Department, I'd like to thank Sergeant Glenn for his decades of service.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Acknowledge, acknowledged the resignation of Theo Jordan as the volunteer grant coordinator, again, I'd like to thank Theo for his work as the, the grant coordinator, uh, concurrents on the promotion of the, of Officer Richard Pettit to sergeant effective July first, 2019, at step one.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Consider approving the following board of selectmen reappointments, Christopher Berglin and William Fay Jr. to the finance committee, three years.
So moved, second.
All those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Concurrents on the following town administrator reappointments, I know there are sometimes questions on these, I will just read through them, if you have any issues, please say hold, and then I'll, I'll ask for a motion on all but the holds, if there are no issues, we'll just vote on it, John Flynn, pegboard one year, Susan Miola and Raymond DeSanti, town life planning committee, three years, Michael Pacar, Brenda Bowman and Raymond DeSanti, open space implementation committee, three years, Vinnie Vignali, community preservation committee, three years, Stephen Jones, annual control officer, one year, eleven thousand dollars stipend, Louis Massa, assistant annual control officer, one year, David Luzon as veteran service officer, annual stipend five thousand dollars, one year, Douglas Hawker, assistant veteran service officer, one year, permanent sergeants Thomas Baldwin and Anthony Papandrea, three years, permanent patrolman Marcelo Tavano, David Westman, David Pepeki, and Matthew Saunders, three years, and I should have just said as printed in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Meetings, invitations, and announcements, on June ninth, 2019, at two-thirty at the First Congregational Church is the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for John Sarassi, June tenth, 2019, at six P M. is a listening session for municipal vulnerability plan with CMR PC and Core MVP Team Selectmen's Room of the Town Hall, uh, June twenty-seventh, two, uh, seven P, June twenty-sixth at seven P M. is the next selectmen's meeting, and then, um, discuss summer meeting schedule, it says, uh, July tenth and August seventh, so we're going to try to do two meetings, we'll end up doing six, um, if anybody, anybody have any issues with doing just two meetings in, one, one each in July and August? Okay, so we'll change the agendas moving forward, uh, future agenda items and selectmen's[1698.12]